Pete Hoyt and Cal are here in the room as well. And so, welcome everyone. And we will start with privilege of the floor. Does anyone wish to speak? If you're on screen, could you raise your hand if you know how to do that or just wave at the camera?
Just real quick, I'm already booked. I know it's in the town board's discretion. But you can certainly, the zoning commission can make a request. And that be that those other two vacancies be filled. Like I said before, vacancies on the zoning commission.
My role?
I would prefer to see one filled by a farmer, one filled by an entrepreneur. Give it a little bit of diversity. That would be my wish.
I'm an entrepreneur.
Well, you're already on it.
Just wanted to say that. We have several of those.
I don't know if the town is ready for two Gene McFeeters.
I think they're perfectly ready. I don't have a twin, but we'll call someone up.
Well, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Pete. Does anyone else wish to speak to privilege of the floor this evening?
Two that are sluggishly being admitted.
Okay, we have two people who are coming in. We'll see. Okay. In that case, if anyone who is showing up wants to wave their hand at the screen, I will allow it in a minute or two. But we'll get on and we'll approve the minutes of March 22nd. Does anyone want to move those? Ernie is moving those?
Minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. Michelle or someone?
I'll second it. I mean, didn't, wasn't there, did a change have to be made to the thing about personal wind towers? And was that change made?
No, but I will make that, I will make that change before I, I will make that change.
Okay.
I didn't have a chance. Okay, so with the, with the change to the wind towers, I will, may I see Pete for approval?
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Any objections? That is approved. I will make that change and we'll put it up tomorrow. Tim Murray, do you have a town council report?
The town council held a public listening session regarding zoning this past Saturday at the Caroline Town Hall, which was a hybrid meeting. And will hold a third and final listening session for the sequence at least. Next Saturday at 1:00 at the Sliderville Fire Hall. That meeting will not be hybrid. It will be in-person only. I might mention just a couple of things that came up in the Saturday meeting, which, which could be pertinent. In addition to many speeches against zoning per se, there were quite a few concerns raised by many speakers about the perception that there would be inability, inability for families to, let's say, build homes for their children on their land. That came up quite a few times. And the other thing that might be helpful just to hear is that there was one presenter who was concerned that their land was being, their property parcel was being split by into two different, into two different districts on the map. So I just thought it would be helpful for you to hear these very specific things. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, I think Tim misspoke about next Saturday's listening session will be at the Brookton Dale Fire Hall.
Oh, that's what I meant to say. I'm so sorry. What did I say?
That's okay.
What did I say?
You said.
No, it's Brookton Dale, Brookton Dale. Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
It's been a long day.
Okay. If we listen to that, can we identify who that homeowner is about the splitting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I will make sure to do that. I've been listening to them afterwards.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you who it is. It's Joe Wiki.
Okay.
Where is the recording? Cause I looked at the town website and I couldn't find it.
It's under, the recording is on the town board site.
Go to documents.
Go to documents and then it's there.
Special meetings.
Yeah, if anyone wants to listen to one of them, it's not on the zoning commission site. It's on the town board site under, under documents. And you go to the minutes and it will be there.
Mark, would there be a way for us just to indicate that on the homepage somehow? So it'd be easy for people to find.
Okay. That's a good idea. I'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike do it. Yeah.
And I think I have Joe Wiki's email. I will ask specifically about his parcel and find out about that. So we're going back to the first draft of the zoning law and we have a couple of things. I guess the question we have is, we have a few things I know that we need to go back and look at. And then also Bill did this monumental amount of work of looking at all of the parcels in the town and their size, which amazing, a big round of applause because it was a lot of work. And I myself was stunned about, oh, actually, we have to do this now because we're silent. This means applause in the, in the deaf community.
Oh.
Yeah. So I was very surprised when Bill, when I looked at what Bill had sent us about how many parcels were quite a bit less than an acre, some of them less than two tenths of an acre. And so I think that's one of the things we want to talk about is the size of these parcels and because, I mean, someone could build an outbuilding if they happen to have the other piece of land. But you couldn't build on two tenths of an acre because you could never put in septic. It just wouldn't work.
According to some of the stuff I read, it's up to the health department.
It is.
Right, but that doesn't include you from using some sort of venture on that property that did not require plumbing.
Right.
Very few, but.
Yes.
And this is a question that we will, I think, need to address today because I, you know.
Yes.
We've all learned a few new things about that, so.
Okay, so let's start with that and then go back and finish up a little bit of the use table and then go on to the rest. So let's start with that. So Bill, I think you need to present this because you did this work.
Okay, so I'm not sure what you mean by start with that. Explain what you want me to do.
Well, talk about what you did and what, and your findings and the questions that you, that you asked, that you've sent to us today.
All right, all right, thanks. I'll see what I can remember. All right, so, so in particular, what I really, I did look at all parcels, but the stuff I talked about was just for parcels in the agricultural slash rural district. It's actually no surprise, of course, that there's a lot of small parcels in, in the hamlet districts. So I don't remember the exact numbers, but you know, at least half the parcels are under six acres in size and one of the questions relates to dwelling density in the agricultural rural area. And here's how it falls down. If we have, say, a three acre per dwelling density limit, what does that mean for parcels in the town? So if you have a 21 acre parcel, what that means is that you could have up to seven dwellings on that parcel because 21 divided by seven is three, or 21 divided by three is seven, however you want to think about it. What does it mean for a parcel that's not large, but it's say on three acres or less than three acres or even four acres? And what we learned from Nan recently is that basically it's a, it's a rounding thing. So if you take a parcel that's four acres in size divided by three, that gets you just over one. But you round it down to one, that parcel anomaly is allowed to have one dwelling on it. However, there is in our law, I, you know, a clause that says if a parcel is in existence at the time the zoning law is passed, even though it's only that three or perhaps four acres, it is still allowed to be subdivided once. So that was news that came out of the thing today. So I was looking at this because I was concerned that a parcel that's about four acres or so in size that right now could easily be divided up into two or three different dwellings under current town law would have a very drastic change happen, which is that it couldn't have any more than one dwelling. It turns out that's not correct because of the way the zoning law is set up. And I was going to urge for that setup. It's already set up that way. Okay, so that's one piece of it. The other piece that actually indeed took more time and energy to look into is, well, what are people really doing when they subdivide parcels in the agricultural and rural section? And so I looked at most of, you know, 80% or so of the parcel subdivisions that have taken place in the last 11 years. And the answer is that while they did often create parcels less than three acres in size, one acres, two acres, three acres, it was almost always because it was being subdivided off a big piece. And in almost no cases would the subdivisions that actually have taken place be in, say, you know, violation therefore of, of the three acres per dwelling limit that we are proposing. And so that was the other bottom line, which is that while there are many small parcels in, in the agriculture rural district, by and large, the kind of dwelling density we are thinking about is very consistent with the overwhelming practice of residents of Caroline. And yes, like I mentioned, I found only one out of roughly 100 plus 130 subdivisions that split a parcel that was actually only about two and a half acres big into, into two pieces, only one case in the last 11 years. Again, there are a few that I have not looked at, so I maybe I missed another one. So, okay, so that's a meandering wander through because I really wasn't expecting to speak to this point, but any rate, I want to hear a little more clarification from Nan as to what happens to a parcel that's 4.2 acres when we pass the zoning law. Do they, are they allowed to have one subdivision or not? I understand three and below, that's certainly true. And then I just want to make sure that it's clear. It's certainly clear in the subdivision law. I make sure it's clear in the zoning law that there are occasionally small changes to lot lines made because, you know, the adjacent person wants to buy that little sliver of land on the side of this person. And that's called a lot line adjustment and that happens without any kind of review. And I want to make sure that kind of thing can still happen without any kind of review. So that's my quick summary and now as coherent as I would have liked, but if anyone has follow-up questions, go ahead and ask.
Okay, so why don't we have Nan respond to those? And, and then we'll see if anyone has any other questions.
Um, I guess I'm a little confused, Bill, about when you were saying, you know, for parcels that are less than 4.5 acres. The, the statement that's in the zoning simply says that any undersized block can be, can have be split twice or have a principal dwelling on it. So you don't have to split it. If you have an undersized parcel and you can get water in a septic system in, you can have a house. If you have an undersized parcel, for whatever reason, you can still split it twice and have houses provided you can get water and septic. So I guess I'm confused about what the 4.5 acres is.
Okay, so the, the language in 8.1, section B, talks about an undersized lot and talks, of course, obviously in a, in a hamlet district, it's undersized in dimension, that's fine. But it says also, and on the language here, if it's also undersized, you know, for the dwelling density. And so that language to me means this clause covers parcels three acres or smaller, assuming that the decision is to have a dwelling density of three acres per dwelling. When we talk to you about, okay, now let's look about parcels in general. How many dwellings, you know, how many subdivisions can it be? How many dwellings can there be on it? It's basically you take the parcel size divided by three. And then someone asks the question, well, what about, you know, obviously you have fractional things, right? If you, if you have seven acres, you divide that by three, that gives you two and something, but that means you can have two. What about 4.4 acres? And five acres, so five acres, you divide that by three, you get 1.6 or something like that. And the question is, or a little more, but the question is, yeah, 1.7667, as the mathematician to me kicks in. So you said, well, that, you, you round that, so a five acre parcel could have two dwellings on it. Assuming you can get water and septic approval. What about then a parcel that's 4.4 acres?
Right.
So what happens to that parcel right now?
Yeah, well, so 4.4 acre parcel could have, could be just built on to have one house.
Right.
Or
Wouldn't it be allowed to, to, to subdivide to?
Yeah.
That's my question.
Be subdivided into two.
Okay.
Dwelling.
That's my, my thought and hope, but just the language in the clause wasn't clear to me because it said anything sub-size and I, I just didn't know if that language included something bigger than three, if three is the dwelling density. But if that's what it means legally, I'm fine.
Yeah, I, I think that the simple answer is, is the intent is that, that that it would, anything would be able to be able to be split twice. And each of those parcels could have a home if there was water and septic or it could be used for something else if you weren't, like you said, if you weren't going to use water and septic. But we could, we could.
I just want to ask for a little clarity. You keep on saying split twice.
A subdivision.
That seems. Into two.
We can split once.
Into two, correct.
Okay.
Sorry, right, right. Um, if. No, I'm just.
Just to underline that, what that means is that anyone who currently owns a parcel can definitely subdivide a piece off. So in response to Tim's query, that means, you know, if you own a parcel, either with a dwelling or not a dwelling, you can definitely divide a piece off of it. And so that concern, you know, luckily is, is, should not be a significant concern for the residents of the town because they are able to do exactly what they're asking.
Well, I, I think also we've been talking about section 8.1B, but, but 8.1C is important as well because.
Yeah, actually. Right, it's actually 8.1C is the more critical clause in this conversation, I think. I mean, they both add to it, but I think C, C is the important one and, and we could add a definition into the definition section of what undersized means to clarify that.
That, that's essentially what I just wanted to make sure is, is true. And again, if we need to make any sort of exclusion around lot line adjustments. And I know some of them are a little, I mean, some of them are obvious, like again, you know, in February, someone divides a little piece off and in, in, in two months later, their neighbor buys it. But, you know, there was certainly one in where a smallest parcel was split. One piece was absorbed into a huge parcel that the same person happened to own. And then later that parcel was, big parcel was subdivided. And I don't know if that's considered a lot line adjustment or not, but.
Yeah, you know, a lot line adjustment is any change in boundary lines that does not create a new lot. And, and I don't really consider a lot line adjustment a subdivision because you're not creating a new parcel. So I don't think that the lot, the, the moving around of lot lines from smaller to bigger or, you know, reconfiguring the lines, as long as it's not creating a new law, it's a lot line adjustment in, in, fine, go ahead and do it. I mean, you know, unless you're.
Great.
You know, there might be some other issue with that boundary line change, but they're generally, I don't even like to consider lot line adjustments a subdivision. I mean, it's a process, but it's not a subdivision.
Okay, that, that makes a lot of sense and I don't know if we need to, you know, say anything about that, but I agree. If, if subdivision means you're creating a new parcel, again, I think temporarily sometimes a parcel is made in a lot line adjustment because I think it's not always like day one, day two, sometimes there's a little gap in there and I don't know how that counts, but.
Well, that's why we have a review process for lot line adjustments is so that we don't create those little slivers that sometimes happen. That's a no man's land, you know, nobody knows who owns it or, or how it's, you know, accounted for. But, so the sub, the subdivision law really should have, it should address, you know, it should address the process for how someone does a lot line adjustment.
Okay. All right, and then just to move on a little bit, because getting into the septic thing a little bit, just because the size of the parcel that one creates, you know, if, if you're going to do it for a dwelling, then you need to be able to have septic and water. As Ernie pointed out, if you're not using it for a dwelling, then it could really be anything. And indeed, occasionally there have been two tenths of an acre parcels created because it's not for a dwelling. Maybe it's for a substation or, you know, some other, other use. But I do want to make sure that everyone on the planning, sorry, zoning commission is aware. So I've been operating for a long time under the assumption that to get septic and water took about an acre, maybe a little more depending on the actual soil type. Digging into this for reasons of answering someone in the resident's question, turns out that that's not strictly true. That in Tompkins County, the Tompkins County Environmental Health Code, the septic, because of the septic codes has a clause, which is an exemption clause, which is if you want the Tompkins County Environmental Health to design your septic system, your onsite waste treatment system for free, they will do it, but they require an acre. But you are allowed to hire your own engineer to design a system if you have, you know, they can fit in your 0.3 acre lot if you want. But it does put the burden on the landowner to hire an engineer to design the system. And then the health department, environmental health department signs off on that system. They will examine the system, make sure it meets their standards and approval. So it's not quite correct to say, oh, the health department requires an acre. And for that reason, I think the language does have to be, you know, that you can make whatever size lot you want and, you know, the warning of, you know, if you want to put a dwelling on it, it has to meet their standards for water and waste disposal.
Okay. Interesting to note because that's not what it says on their website, is it?
Yeah, it's not when you look at the first level. You have to dig deep.
It's a wrinkle that, that actually I think everyone, that some of us have been aware of, but it's just can regularly not, you don't go there unless you've got a real problem. And then you hire the engineer to get you out of a fix. You would not willingly subdivide your property in order to, you know.
Yeah, because it would be really expensive to.
Yeah, it's just, it's an expensive system and expensive process and.
Okay.
Right, but the philosophical question is, say, in the hamlet of Brookton Dale, and this, we'll get to this a bit later, does that mean we specify a one acre minimum density? Or do we allow smaller acreage sizes in, which, any of the hamlets? Assuming that most people won't do it, but do we need to prevent people from doing it? I think that's something to chew on until we get to that stage of the dimension table.
Well, another thing about septic systems is that, you know, I, I was trying to find an actual reference to this and I can't find it, but I ran across something a couple of months ago that indicated that the state was re-examining the sanitary code. And presumably with the idea that some of those regs about septic systems were going to change. And if we know how things change, it would become more strict rather than less strict. But I can't find anything about that, so that's just in the back of our heads that, you know, we should rely on what the regs are as opposed to what our lot sizes are.
Yeah.
For that particular reason, but anyway.
Yeah, I think the references in, in the draft refer not to any specific, I, I'd have to check, but, you know, it generally refers to that things can happen provided water and septic system.
Right.
And not pointing to any one set of standards.
Okay.
I might say Tompkins County. I'd have to go back and look.
Yeah, no, no, my, my question had more to do with the minimum lot sizes and hamlets. I, I agree, your language is pretty careful on that in general.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
I guess I have a question, maybe a comment. I, I think my comment is somehow this article eight, this section we're talking about, I'm wondering if it could be pointed to in some way more clearly so people know that it's there because, you know.
Yes.
We have had all these discussions and, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't think I realized it either until we had, until Nan sent that thing around. And so I think a lot of people in town might be really concerned about it when, in fact, you know, they would be allowed to do it. And my question though relates to the whole thing, you know, we've had the conversation about being able to put an elder cottage on your property or, or something. How does that relate to this discussion? If you build a small cottage for your parents on your property, you, you also have to provide them with septic and water, correct?
It depends, it depends on how it's laid out, you know, if you, if you have a, if you decide you're going to turn the back end of your house into an apartment, that most likely would use the same septic system. If you're going, depending on how many bedrooms, I mean, it's, it's based on how many bedrooms. And so if you turn your garage into apartment, sometimes they let you share a septic system, sometimes you have to put in a separate one. But those are allowed in the use table. We have those as I think we call them accessory, accessory apartments or accessory dwelling unit. So they are allowed, they generally don't.
Accessory apartments.
Yeah, and they generally don't count towards the density, so they're kind of like freebies in terms of density. And then again, it's the same thing is that you would have to have the Department of Health to identify what septic system or water capacity you have in order to turn your garage into an apartment. So they would dictate whether you need a new well or a separate septic system for them.
But you could also build a separate building, correct?
Yes. But it provided, provided that it's an accessory. So you can't build a structure that's bigger than the, you know, principal building. It's a, it's a secondary building. So if you want to build a garage sized building for, you know, an accessory dwelling, I mean, some communities don't allow that, but I, I think we set this up to allow both, you know, internal, so you create, you turn your dining room into a studio apartment or you turn your garage into apartment or you build a little, you know, granny flat or, you know, a, an accessory apartment.
Because I, I thought I read recently that New York State was, isn't there some issue? I guess Ernie could speak to this, but New York State is promoting this and there were some communities that were upset about it because it would go against their zoning regulations.
Yeah, there's a lot, there is a lot of bias in many communities about allowing accessory dwelling units. Lots of places don't allow them for a variety of reasons. It depends on the community. But there is, there is in the last even year or two, there's just a huge emphasis on opening up zoning to allow for a variety of housing types. I think what you're referring to is there, there has been a bill moving through the state legislature that would mandate local communities to allow for accessory dwelling units. So you couldn't, you couldn't prohibit them. But we didn't prohibit them. We're, we're promoting them here in this, in this draft zoning.
Okay, so let me make a point here about the accessory apartments in single family houses and accessory apartments and accessory structures are on our residential uses and customary residential uses. In single family homes, they're permitted all the way across and accessory structures, it's ASPR all the way across. And also this part that we were discussing about article eight is on page 87. That's where, if you happen to have a copy of this at home or you're looking online, it's on page 87. That's what we're, we have leapt forward in time to talk about article eight for a moment. Back to, back to Michelle. You're on mute.
No, I, I, so I guess I just wanted to also point out that people that are concerned about this, I mean, there are like two ways you can have your family live on your property, right? You can either split your property or you can have an accessory building.
Right.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, does anyone else have any questions about what we've just been discussing? If not, we're going to leap back in time back to where we were. I think we had finished up telecommunication towers and we have, if I'm right, we have veterinarians and wind towers to finish. Is that right? Am I in the right place?
I am not sure we finished telecommunications towers, but maybe.
I think you're right. We didn't, we didn't.
And I can, if I, I'm ready to share my screen.
Excellent.
You should be able to, Bill.
Okay, yeah, it's letting me, so there we go. Okay, yeah, it's letting me. So there we go. This is the residential section that. He was just talking about and I zoomed down. Um, now the table's laid out a little different than we did before because I added this, uh, key in. We still decided that's what we're doing or not. But it is, it did space the table out differently. So we had finished, I'm pretty sure. I knew we got through sawmill. I don't think we talked about private schools, but does anybody else remember? Maybe we did. We were somewhere in here. We hadn't gotten the solar energy and I know we did sawmill. So we're somewhere in here.
I think we did schools, private, and everyone was happy with that and the self storage facility.
Okay.
And the service business is not otherwise listed. We talked a little bit about that.
Maybe because I did not edit anything here. So it looks like that may be where we need to start up.
Bill, can that be at all bigger?
Yes, it can. Now again, there, there is a trade off that will miss the top, but I will, um. Uh, let's see, it's.
I just can't figure out which glasses to wear to.
Yeah.
Why do I know that? That's where we all are.
So I can make it somewhat bigger, but again, we're going to lose the, the what zone is what.
Okay. I can, I can deal.
All right. And actually for, 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 for service businesses, I can probably just get it on. There we go. And. Uh, I guess I, I will go ahead and, and move the indicated changes in red to, uh. Change from prohibited as, as except as a home occupation. Uh, to instead site plan review in the hamlets of the outer part of Brooktondale, Caroline Center in Speedsville. That's this change right here.
Yep.
Oops, there it is.
What do people think about that? Is that okay? Anyone have any? Questions about that?
Service businesses.
These are service businesses, not otherwise listed.
So this is like architects. Lawyers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that, that sort of built.
Okay, and, and this would tend to cover a lawyer who actually wanted an office, not like, you know, in a different property, right? And, and many architects might actually work out of their own home, for example, or any.
Yeah.
But I think service business also includes things, uh, I think we talked about this, uh, like, um. People that do excavation, that's considered a service business, isn't it?
Uh.
It's not just, uh.
There is a definition for it that you can look at on page one twenty. Um, it says establishments primarily engaged in providing assistance rather than products to individuals, businesses, industries. Government and other enterprises. They include but are not limited to personal su- services such as beauty salons, massage, instruction. Counseling, repair, funeral, business contractual services such as janitorial services, property maintenance. Excavation, plumbing, heating and consultant, consulting and professional services such as physicians, engineers, legal and financial.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
They're not all, all like offices say like an architect or, you know, but it can be something like.
Right. So how do people feel about the? Uh, the designations of SPR in. Uh. I can't read the bottom of that, so.
Yeah. So. So we're talking about the, the Hamlets of Kellin Center, Speedsville and Brooktondale, uh. Changing from, you know, getting not prohibitive, it's not a home occupation to then site plan review.
Yeah, what are you printing? Yeah.
I, I agree. Okay, you too. Anyone else? We happy? Here are none. I'm assuming we're happy.
Yeah.
Okay, moving up.
All right. So now we're gonna, let's see. All right. So yeah, so now, uh, we are looking at the solar energy stuff. So that'll, that'll be easy, I think. Um, basically a small solar energy facility, you know, and these things that we've talked about. So this one, there's actually no proposed edits. So as long as everyone's happy, we're, we're moving on. Um, there's a, a, a resident comment that I'll read in a second. But basically a small facility like would be used in, you know, for, you know. The things that rooftop solar or yard solar, you know, those are permitted in all districts. And the larger facilities, either the medium or large, medium is up to like two and a half acres if I'm remembering my own law properly. And solar energy is larger areas than that are only allowed in the agricultural rural district. And the commercial district and both cases would need a special use permit. There was one comment. Um. Uh, that basically is, is in concert with this, uh, it was someone pointing out, uh, how useful a, a solar farm is for, for farmers. Um, because, uh, you know, they can still use the land for grazing and other purposes. And so it's, it's, it's kind of a win-win situation for, for local farmers. So I think that's consistent with what we've done here. Uh, so, so I would suggest, you, basically it's like, yeah, anyone objects to anything we've done here doesn't speak, but I think we, we have sort of talked about this one before.
Okay, so I just would just add one important part related to the farming. Is that solar facilities on a farm that's in a New York State ag district are considered farm structures. So it, it, they can be allowed to produce up to a hundred and ten percent of the farm's energy needs. And it would be no different than a barn or a silo or something like that. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, good point. I didn't know that.
Great.
Okay, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna try some quick magic here. Uh, that move it down. Okay, maybe that's gonna work. Okay, now we can.
You're including all those solar ones. Those are fine. Cause no one said anything else. Great. Okay, good.
All right. So now we can see the, uh, hamlets and the. Things, so. So we have nothing in for telecommunication tower right now. Um, the town law. Uh, about them doesn't really say much about location. It has some, some locating guidelines. But there's nothing that says it can be here, cannot be there. There's sort of a, a hierarchy tier of preferred locations. Uh, again, without zoning, that's pretty much what the town could do at the time that law was written. And so I think we have not addressed yet in this committee. Uh, what, what districts to allow or not allow. And I believe, um, and as we're, you know, now we certainly need to lean on you a bit. You know, there, there's a fair amount of federal supersession in terms of locating of telecommunication towers. I'm not, you know, but I know there's some amount of local authority, um, but I don't know more than that.
And I, I just want to say that, uh, number twenty, that note, that, that's the question is, is there any way we can control sighting? That's what twenty refers to.
Uh, there's somebody who wants to be admitted.
Oh, thank you.
And, um, Nan, do you have any?
I think Barb had her hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Barb.
Um, no, I don't have my hands up. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Um. There are, I, I would have to go back and do a little refreshing, um. Towns can require site plan review and special use permits for telecommunication towers. But, um. And there are instances where I think that you, um, where they can be prohibited. Like in special districts like scenic overlays and things like, you know, historic districts and things like that. Um. I'm, but I think that, um. Yeah, I would have to go back and, and do some reading. I haven't worked on a cell tower in a while. Um, but you can definitely require special use permits and site plan review for them, even if you can't say. No, totally. You can influence, um, you know, you can influence them somewhat. And I, I would, sorry, I just would have to go back and re- refresh myself on it.
And, and again, Nan, just sort of re-ask her question I asked last time. So for a special use permit, essentially you're going through the full site plan review process as well. Because you did have a, uh, it, it does have a SPR slash SUP code in your original table, which I didn't duplicate. Cause again, it felt to me like SUP sort of meant SUP and site plan review.
Yes, you're right. I agree. I, I agree. I mean, the, the site plan is kind of baked in as part of how you do a special use permit.
Okay, so I'm gonna propose most moves. I want a second that we just go with. Specials permit across the board pending review by Nan, at which point maybe we can decide whether it could be not in. Booming downtown Brooktondale or some other places. I, I just don't know, but that'd be one suggestion is we put site plan, especially permit across the board.
Um, this is Barb. I'd rather, uh, that we do site use, uh, special use permit, um. In the ag rural district and in commercial and X everywhere else. And if we learn that we not allowed to have X's in any zoning district, um, we can change that.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
I would second that motion.
Yeah, okay. I agree with that.
Okay, uh, everyone happy? Everyone's happy with that? Thank you. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Um, great.
And we have veterinarian.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, and, uh, one person, I know we had a couple of comments, uh, on veterinarian. Uh, basically one person saying they should be allowed, um, you know, any, everywhere. Uh, whether a large or small animal vet, I think many people would welcome them in town wherever they want to cite themselves. And a, a, another resident wrote in to say, um, that particularly they object the exclusion in the ag rural zone. Uh, they see this as a very reasonable use of ag rural land, especially if it was a large animal vet. Uh, we might want to set up a clinic out in the more ag area. Um, but he thinks also he or she thinks it's also a reasonable place for small or mixed animal clinics. Um, and I believe, I don't know if Catherine, uh, is still on the call, but I think she had some. Uh, comments to me one time about the definition of veterinarian. I don't know.
I'm here.
Okay, I don't know if you want to say anything about what a veterinarian is. Is there something we should change in the definition? Advice you want to give us on that?
Well, I can help in any way that like would feel useful to you all commenting as, as a veterinarian, not a board member, just for clarity, but you know, the. Veterinarians as, they can look very different. You know, there's a wide swath of what would be considered a veterinarian. And so I think you guys could figure that, you know, we could do this in a number of different ways. Um, if there is. A feeling of wanting to restrict veterinarians, which I can't really comment on that as a board member at this time, but. You know, small animal, large animal, ambulatory, in a clinic, not in a clinic, home visit, home office. Mobile, you know, it's just, it's, I think. That's all I'll say about that. It's more complicated, I think, than maybe just saying veterinarian because you really have to know what you're. Talking about and then, you know, what, in terms of what you are intending on regulating. If that's helpful.
Well, the, it just speaks for putting things in as a special use permit. Um, where we can actually evaluate whether it's the type of veterinary that makes sense in that district.
Yep.
Well, maybe what you're referring to is a better, maybe what you want to regulate is not like the traveling vet. Um, that operates out of, you know, a truck or whatever, but it's a veterinarian office. Or clinic. The building, the structure, not the, not the veterinarian care itself, it's the structure.
So change that to veterinary clinic. That makes sense.
But, but again, the structures can be very different depending if it's large animal or small animal.
Right. And, and then I think that, but I think you're, you're right. We're not talking about the profession. We're talking about the building use. Um, and then Ernie's suggestion of putting in. Um, a special unit use permit across also I think makes sense. What do other people think?
I agree. I mean, you don't take your large animal to, to the vet, right? Don't vets usually visit large animals?
There could be a number of different, yeah, sometimes you do. If, if you need an operation, sometimes they do.
Okay.
All creatures, great and small.
Yeah. In fact, people come from all over to go to Cornell with their whatevers, right? Yep.
Oh, that's true.
So, so what about Beesmer and, and West Sliderville?
Um.
X.
Because you're seeing them as home and not as, as home areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't delivery in Beesmer?
Yep.
So I would just, if I may, you could have a small animal clinic in the livery and that would, you know.
Yeah. So, so for, so. I mean, I'm, I don't speak for everybody else, but basically if, for example, someone moved out of the livery, there was some nice space in there and a small. Vet clinic wanted to move in, I don't know how that would get handled. Uh. It would still be continued commercials to that grandfather building, Nan, but if we have an X there, does that mean a vet could not take over space in the livery building? It's in the Beesmer hamlet. It's a non-conforming use.
Yeah, I mean, it would be changing from one kind of commercial category to another. So if you don't allow veterinary clinics. It could still be a commercial building, but not for veterinary clinic. As we said, they're prohibited in that district.
Okay, thank you.
What do other people think about veterinary clinics? We've heard Ernie's perhaps putting an X in to have with Beesmer and have it with Sliderville. If anyone else want to opine in a different fashion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll opine. Uh, I, I would be comfortable with SUP in all districts. Um, you know, it's a veterinarian clinic that is sized to the type of use, you know, in that particular district. That's what the special use permit could help guide.
Okay, let's see where people come in on that. Um. Barbara's suggestion, give me a thumbs up if that's a good idea for you.
I'll say that.
Uh, anybody prefer Ernie's?
No.
Even Ernie does. Okay.
I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm easy. I'm, I was going, signing with Ernie and my general philosophy that I'm, you know, holding the line pretty firmly on the types of businesses that are in Beesmer. Or in West Sliderville, but you know, I am happy to lose every once in a while.
Okay, so.
What can we do with a doctor's office? That was.
Well.
Yeah, that would be a similar thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking because people take their animals to the vet all the time.
Right, okay.
We, we had a health clinic. Yeah, so we went with site plan review in all districts for health, medical clinic, laboratory, for I think along similar reasoning. So, um, I think that that argues in favor of what we just decided.
Okay, yeah, great.
Cause you can still have, like, I've seen vet clinics that just look like houses.
Right, me too.
So it's like plan review across the board.
Yeah.
I actually special use permit because.
Yeah.
Veterinary clinics vary a lot in type. And so SUP would be the one thing besides just layout of the lot, et cetera, that it could. Get at.
Right.
Use of it, maybe, yeah, so.
Okay, now we're on to wind towers. We're whipping along here with wind towers.
Yeah, so we've dealt with personal wind towers, right? That was up earlier. This is now large, like this would be like commercial, uh, systems. And, uh, I believe we actually sort of decided before, because we talked back and forth in the two. That actually they would not be allowed anywhere un- until the town passed a, a wind, a large wind sighting law. Uh, so putting X across the board is no different than deleting the line entirely. Unless one wanted to think of an array of wind towers as a home use, which I think would be a pretty tough. Argument to make, but I would recommend I move that we just put X's here. As sort of a placeholder, because we really do want this to say something, but I'm also okay just deleting the line. So I don't know.
It should just be defined, you know, I mean, in the, in the small wind tower, we've got a definition for. Small wind generating facility or whatever that acronym was. This should just be large wind generating facility. Right, so we have two kinds.
Yep.
One kind is permitted, one kind is not permitted, the other kind.
Yes, I think that makes sense.
And again, but, but the question I'm trying to ask is, of course, if you delete the line, then it can't, it, it's the same as not allowing it.
Right.
And so I think, uh, it was wind towers for personal use is how we defined it before.
Right.
Wind towers for commercial, I mean, you know, I don't, you know, or just large wind towers.
I.
Well, again, I think if there's, if there's a definition, it should be the name that's used in the definition.
Right. So we'll ask Nan for that advice and we'll, uh, we'll put that in.
We, we are defining them.
Right.
As being, you know, this hundred and ten percent, this certain sizes, da, 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 da.
Right. Right.
So.
I mean, I guess, yeah, they could be defined as anything that does not meet the definition of a personal wind tower.
Exactly.
Exactly. Okay.
Not anything that meets the definition of a small wind tower.
Right, yeah, whatever, whatever I, yeah, well, they're called personal wind tower, should we go with small?
No, 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 we could small wind generating, I forget, SWGS, yeah, small wind generating system.
Small wind generating system, exactly.
The kind of the common usage through the country.
That's how I always refer to them.
Oh, yeah. Do I have this right here, Ernie? I have small wind energy generating systems.
Yeah.
Swags.
Where?
Alright.
Swags.
Swags.
So these systems generate small winds?
Small winds.
Only the mighty wind. Okay.
Next to the K for.
Moving along, I think that we have finished this. We're now going to talk about what the P means and what the X means.
Hey, no, wait, no.
Wait.
Uh, we have to go back to auction houses.
Oh, right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's go back to auction houses.
That's under A, right? Here we go.
Auction house. What we have here is an SPR in ag rural right now, or is that your suggestion? An X is across an SPR in commercial.
I don't know where that SPR came from, actually. I looked at my notes.
I I don't.
My, I think that I made the point that a lot of auction houses are repurposed barns and that they, aesthetically anyway, kind of uh, fit in agricultural areas. Um, so that was, I think, why we tucked an SPR in there.
I think you're right. Okay.
But again, I, yeah.
And ag rural do, they do have like animal auctions and things like that. Well, there's that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then your suggestion is that we get rid of the X and we leave the SPR. Michelle, are you happy with that?
I don't know. I guess just because of when I saw that what Bostwick looks like, that looks pretty commercial to me. So.
Why it's a special use, oh, maybe it should be a special use.
Yeah, maybe it should be an SUP.
Yeah.
Okay, let's make that an SUP. Does that make sense to people?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
And it's SPR in commercial.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, I might get rid of that X and then we're good. Okay.
Alright, yeah, okay.
Yay. Okay, so now we are going to go back to what it says in the key, and the key says, um, he says, I like this P, not N, use, you, use not requiring any review board permit approval or review. However, a building permit from the code enforcement officer or approvals from other agencies may be required. That makes sense to me for P. And X says prohibited except as a home occupation minor or major. Now, I realize that some people may freak out by seeing an X without actually reading the key, but I don't think we can do anything else about that.
I'm gonna scroll to the top, sorry. Here we go, there you go.
Yeah, so are people happy with those?
Yeah.
Yay.
It's just one people.
Well, so, so, alright, so basically I am, but I do, you know, point, we do have several places where we do have a bunch of words, you know, because they, as part of a farm operation only, and I think that probably is fine. Uh, the alternative is that we have to go with like an F code here, but I
Right, no.
I don't particularly want to go there, but I just want to throw it out there in case somebody else does.
I think that's fine. Everyone else? Good. Fabulous. Okay, um, I want everyone to look at this use table and just make sure that you are happy with it. I think it's right. But I don't want us to move into phase two, into the second draft without people looking at.
Uh, Barb is waving her hand, it's like.
Oh, I can't see Barb's hand, so.
Um, yeah, thanks. Um, I'm just wondering if there, as we're reviewing the use table, is there an estimated date by which we will have a revised terminology list, so we can compare terminology with the items in the use table?
Are you asking me for that?
I'm asking whoever is writing it, which I think is you, Nan.
Yes, um, I'm sorry, I haven't gotten to them yet. Um, I will have them to you next week.
Uh, speaking for Barb, I think she probably wasn't saying, why don't you have this done, but more give us a reasonable heads up so we can plan.
Yes, I I will move it to the top of my list and I I will have it to you next week. Thank you. And the reason it's important is because we're being asked to review this, but we're also being asked to think about when we're going to have the next public information meeting, and we've said that this is important to have available for the public information meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I I will send, you know, I just saved this file. I'll send it tonight, you know, after the meeting, so you all have it.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, I and we were gonna put this out as part of the minutes then, so I believe that we are now going on to article three. Be still my heart. Okay, so, so we're going on to article three uses and dimensions.
Alright, I'm gonna stop this share and pop up the dimensions table, but to be honest, I don't have, I don't have the stuff besides the dimensions table to talk about in that section.
Okay, well, I think, well, you know, we all, we haven't really started to talk about this at all, so we, and you have some questions, I know you sent or some comments you sent, so let me dig those out. And um, Michelle and Bruce, you know, you, this is your committee report too, so if you got stuff you want to say. Find this. Okay, so the uses and dimensions table, so what this basically does is it tells us like how big things can be. Ernie, as an architect, how do you use this?
How do I use this? Uh, I just, you know, before I start a project, I go to the zoning regs and I figure out what district I'm in and what rules are going to apply and uh, and then design accordingly. Um, or notify my client that they're gonna have to get a variance for whatever reason. Often the case.
So at the beginning of article three, it basically kind of puts the um, a lot of the stuff from article two back in at the beginning of it. Would you, I mean, that's, it it has residential uses and customary residential accessory uses again at the, at the beginning of article three.
Uh, I'm not quite following.
It's in the, like, there, so that's article three, the uses and dimensions. And then it goes on to the dimension requirements by district. So I guess my question is, Nan, why do we, why does it get repeated? Is that necessary?
I'm, I'm not seeing where you are reading that.
What's that page?
Well, this is not a page. It's, it's article three uses and dimensions.
Yeah, it's article three, section three, one. It just sort of looks to me like it almost repeats what was in article two.
Well, no, well, article, article two is um, about the districts. So when we've been working about the, when we've been working on the use table, it has been article three. It's just the first part of article three.
Okay, so we've just done article three. I was, I had my numbering off.
Right, we are, we are, these are both part of article three.
Right, so. I was completely messed up with my thinking.
But on the last page of that, it has.
Right, okay, so now article, section three point two. I had confused my articles.
Right.
Okay, uh, so article three point two, the dimension requirements by district. So, we now have these districts here and the residential density. Um, so we have across a lot of the S's, shall be based on total buildable acreage on parcel as per three point two, that says yes. And then the residential density, it has a, uh, now, because we don't have a forest core overlay anymore, it has one dwelling per three buildable acres. And then NA is across. So with that one dwelling per three buildable acres, do we need something that is more that, you know, look at section eight, eight that we were talking about before? I guess that's my question. How does this deal with what we were talking about before?
Yes, I think, I think it'd be useful to include a footnote. I think we've used footnotes in some other sections. Um, just, you know, footnote that item under the ag rural district and then include a note at the bottom of this table to refer um, you know, for uh, for acreage less than this, or or however you want to say it. Um, refer to um, to section eight, eight point one, B and C.
I think that makes sense too. Okay. Um, shall we go ahead?
Uh, well, let me, okay, so I say a couple of things. So we had, again, the green means that that we've received comments um, from residents on this and they're typically on the, on the website. Um, but almost all of those, um, were comments talking about not wanting a minimum lot size of three acres in in the ag rural area. So, um, again, I think that was an understandable, the common misunderstanding of what the density dwelling meant. Um, there was one comment suggesting, because that was so confusing, that we use a frontage, road frontage criterion instead. Um, and I, and I know, having talked to Nan, that that she would advise us against that, and um, uh, I do as well, but if we can talk about changing it, but I basically am in favor of using a dwelling density formulation. Uh, the thing I would normally have brought up is whether it should be three or some, some other larger number. Um, but frankly, whether it's three or whether it's five, I think doesn't really matter. Um, uh, to be significant, it would have to be a large number, and I totally understand that that's not really acceptable to, you know, it's not gonna happen.
Um, it's not, it's not acceptable to me.
Whether it was three or five, if every rural parcel will develop to one dwelling per five acres, this would not be a rural town anymore. So I don't care whether it's three or five, we'll leave it at three, save the fuss. Um, but I did want to, you know, voice that, that, yeah, obviously it really would need to be a much larger number to, to really keep the country, the area rural. The reason it's reasonable is that it will simply limit how densely certain parcels are developed. And I, you know, expect we have to do other things in the town to encourage other parcels to not be developed. I think it really does take a certain amount of of other incentives to keep land open. I don't think the zoning code can or should do that.
Yeah.
And and one of the reasons not to require road frontages is because that just proliferates more roads, which is not something that we want to encourage if we can avoid.
Yeah, I I also, I I want to speak about the three and five acres. I think, um, I I have property that goes to a road that is very populated by people who live in poverty for the most part. And the very thought of putting in a, something that says you have to have twenty acres, or you have to have fifty acres or twenty-five acres, though I think it certainly would preserve more agriculture uh, and more rural properties. I, I just, I think it's just wrong, is the only word I can say for it. It's just that I find it morally objectionable, and I know that several towns here have done that. They've put in very large lot sizes and um, I think it, um, it means that, that people who have lived here or who want to live here and cannot afford a large piece of land don't get to live here, and I, I object to that. So I, I agree that I think we need to do other things as a town and as a community that encourages the rural character without uh, making it impossible for people to afford to live here.
I just want to add to that, in that, I, I buy my vegetables um, twice a year from um, you know, a CSA, a local CSA, and they have three acres, and they're able to produce vegetables to sell.
Yep.
For some significant number of people. So I think three acres, maybe it's not rural, you know, if everybody had three acres, but it will certainly promote a certain level of agriculture. You can do that on three acres, so.
That's true.
Right. And I know we understand, but again, it's not like every lot has to be three acres. The question is, if you had ten acres, you could make a one acre lot on this side, you keep the other nine acres for something else. It's, it's sort of that sort of question is, should that be, that you can divide it up into three dwelling units, or should only be two dwelling units, or one dwelling unit, if you want to be Danby, or you know, whatever. But I think we're all in agreement that a minimum lot size is extremely not fair or appropriate for Caroline.
Yeah, I, the only way I look at it is that with an average, you're still gonna drive the price of land up, not down.
I'm, I don't know. I mean, I think the price of land has gone up exponentially in fifty years anyway. Actually, more than exponentially.
Yeah, but if you're talking, you know, trying to make it affordable, when you go to an average of three acres, it, the price of land's not gonna go down, it's gonna go up.
Bruce, you know, I can.
It's not an average of, it's not a lot size, that's three acres in size.
Right.
And and Bruce, what I, what I can say is, again, I looked at all the splits that have taken place in the partial subdivisions. They're called splits at the assessment office, we call them subdivisions, and there is not one that violates a average of three acre limit, and the price of land certainly has gone up, but this basically won't change anything that's not already happening in the town. There have been some times where a large parcel's been split into seven or eight pieces, but all those pieces are, some are a couple acres and a bunch of five or six or seven acres, and so the average has always been above three, so.
That was in the last eleven years that you looked.
Yes, only in the last eleven years.
They have to look at it.
Okay.
And and I would also point out that, you know, because we are allowing, this is average density, that it does enable things to be built cheaper, because you can cluster your houses together, you have less infrastructure costs.
Yeah.
And you can take the small lots and sell them for less money, take the big lot, sell it for more money. I think that the economics of it can be argued many, many different ways. Um, it's, it's, it's not necessarily gonna make everything more expensive. The way I look at it is if I had his example and I can only split, sell seven lots, I'm not gonna sell them cheaper when I could have sold twenty-one.
Yeah, you're right, Bruce, the question, no one is selling twenty-one lots, cause there's no demand for that.
Right. Yeah, you have to have demand first. Okay, let's go on. I think we have philosophized, and I started it. Um, so that's, we can move off of uh, fifteen and on to sixteen, right?
Sixteen.
Page sixteen.
Yeah, well, for you, yeah, I just got the table up, so I don't, I don't match your, your page numbers there.
We're gonna end at this.
Okay.
So, so the next, the next line is the residential, residential lot size without public water and sewer provided. Um, and that was indeed where we had a specific comment from a resident saying, uh, in terms of the hamlets. Uh, they were someone who had a point three acre lot at one time in in a hamlet, they've since moved. And they were pointing out it'll be difficult to have dense housing in the hamlets if, if the lot size is one or one and a half acres.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and again, that one acre was typically set because that was, is indeed, you know, the site, the size that the, the health department uh, suggests slash request slash requires. Um, only we now turn it not, not a requirement, and so I think that is, the question for us is, do we change these lot sizes? If we are indeed trying to encourage denser um, housing in the hamlet areas, uh, maybe we want it that to be a smaller number to enable, you know, that people can still sell one acre lots, but we would at least enable them to do smaller lots without getting a variance.
One thing you might want to consider, if you don't, I mean, I agree that the one acre came from um, largely from um, health department rules, but I, I believe the, um, you know, there are places that are I don't know what the right word is, maybe liberal, permissive, I don't know what the word is, and they simply say that the lot size can be as small as allowed by the Department of Health in the hamlet. And they simply say that the lot size can be as small as allowed by the Department of Health in the hamlet.
I think that might be a reasonable way to go.
Yeah.
I need to.
I think so too.
I agree.
You know, and so, and then, you know, neighbor A might have terrible soils and might need an acre. And the next lot over. You know, might have great soils and can get away with a quarter of an acre. I doubt it. I really doubt it. I really think.
Absolutely.
There are small package systems available out there. People want to shell out the money.
But then, you know, it, it leads it to, it's conveying that. The town will accept a variety of small lots provided you can get water and septic. Now, the only where this intersects that may be a little different is that. In the hamlet where we're trying to create. Small lots, that was where we had setbacks. So we do have to think about the role of the front setback has a more. Dominant place in a hamlet because it's what creates the streetscape. So, no, we do have to, you know, depending on the decisions that you make for the setbacks, those have to be met as well. So. You know, you have to be able to have, meet both of those categories.
Right. But I like, I like this. I think it. It therefore takes in that issue and. I think it's a reasonable idea.
If we do that, which I was also the same favorite, we, we then dissolve the distinction between with and without public water.
Right, yeah, we get rid of.
Well, well, no, I think because when you have public water. The health department isn't, we, isn't looking at every single individual lot. You know, there'll, there'll be a sewer system that you have to hook up to. So that's really not dependent on the health department anymore. It would be dependent upon the capacity of the sewer system. So I think that that's still valid to, to have in, and. And those are, those figures are actually based on. What we did is we looked at the lot sizes in the hamlets and came up with an average, a median. I guess it was a median. So those are based on what's about there now.
Okay.
All right, there, there is quite a range. Just, you know, again, if you look at the table that I, those that got that table, there is quite a range of sizes. That's median was the right choice to make. So, yeah, so I'm, yeah, I'm having two minds. I want to do here. So this is fine across, but. With public water and sewer or, I don't know what to say here. Ernie, what do you, anyone else?
I, I don't understand why if, if public and water and sewer is going to be. I mean, if we're just going to make the definition that if the health department allows it, will allow it. Then the public water and sewer disappears, right? Missing something? I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I don't understand why that clause needs to remain in there.
So next way, if there, if there's public water and sewer, the health department doesn't get involved, but referring to them probably doesn't. Because it doesn't matter that he referred to them here. If we had public water and sewer, then basically it comes down to consistent with setback requirements is the lot size. And I don't know if that's appropriate for us to.
Oh, I see. So in one case, anything goes and in the other case, we're going to put restrictions on it?
The setbacks would need to be met for both, whether you have water and sewer or not.
Well, no, the setbacks is a separate issue. I think what we're talking about is lot size.
Right.
And are we going to have? You know, one set of lot sizes if there's public sewer and another set of lot sizes if there's not. It doesn't, that doesn't seem to make any sense. Seems to me it should be the same lot size, same minimum lot size. Whether or not you can do it is dependent upon whether you have. Health department approval or public water and sewer.
You know what I would suggest is not putting in anything about public water and sewer. Because I don't think we're going to see it in our lifetime and, or anybody else's lifetime for quite a while. And I would say that when that begins to be discussed, that would be something for the zoning commission at that time to discuss. Or the zoning board at that time to discuss if there is a zoning board. Cause it's just. The cost is astronomical, absolutely astronomical.
But even if it is astronomical, we have a difference in lot size doesn't make any sense. Like Ernie saying, if you're, if you're going to have.
At this point, we really have no minimum. I mean, what if somebody wanted to build a house on point, I don't know.
If they can meet the setback requirements and get a septic system and get a well in there, get it all.
But what if there's not, there's not even a requirement to get a well in? What, because you now have public.
Then why not just use the setback requirements?
Okay. Requirements and come back to this.
And I, I do want to point out, the motion I actually was going to make was indeed just to make these two numbers the same. So I want to at least keep that in that, that would be one possibility. One is to do this with health department because that would at least sort of set. Some minimum baseline in general, because we don't have public water and sewer. Or the other is we just say, well, but based on the median size of what's there, it's these things and we just duplicate that and. You know, perhaps duplicate that in both, both rows. I think either one is a, it's possible. But if you want to look at setbacks versus do that first.
Well, I don't see how you can have a minimum lot size and as small as allowed by the, as by the health department, right? I thought we were getting rid of the minimum lot sizes. Would, in areas that don't have public water and sewer, which is everywhere.
I, I think there's some logic to having a, a minimum lot size, but you know, it could be smaller than what you can do with. A standard health, health department designed septic system. So, you know, you eliminate the row. With, without public water and sewer provided and then you delete the water and sewer provided part of that. And just leave the one acre, one half acre, one half acre, three quarter acre down, down below.
I see what you're saying.
Right. That is a possible.
Okay, let's see what, what that looks like to people then.
Okay, so, 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 all right, what I will say is. I don't, I mean, Nan has picked, has looked at, Nan and Rick have looked at properties and these, the median. And that's why these numbers are here, which is a very reasonable way to go. But it doesn't, what, what, what if indeed someone, there are definitely. Half acre lots in the ag rural district and, you know, maybe there, we should allow some more of those to be created. So I don't know if one acre is the right number.
Yeah, I don't know that's the right number either, but, but you know.
Sorry, sorry, I, I skipped a calm. You're right. So, so that's the number in the Beesmer. So I, my mistake, right? Cause that, that's totally irrelevant. So I don't, I don't.
What you could do is you could, you could look at the line that's got the, with public water and sewer now, which. Has lot sizes that would, a minimum lot size that would kind of perpetuate the current pattern. But what I would look at it is that, you know, pick any one of those half acre. Or three quarter acre locations. And while on paper, you might be able to go down that low. In reality, you might not. So you could say one half a, you know, for instance, you could say a, a half acre or. As small as allowed by the health department consistent with setback requirement. So you could combine those two. So you have a minimum lot size that perpetuates current development pattern. Or smaller if the health department would allow.
So you're saying the language you're suggesting would allow, for example, if we did it here in Slaterville Springs, where it currently says half an acre. That we would add language said, or as small as allowed by the health department.
If you, if you guys think having any small sized lot is suitable. Provided the services are there to support it. That's a policy. For, you know, for you to make. So I think you have to decide if you want to let, perhaps any kind of small size. Or do you want to kind of perpetuate current pattern? Which those numbers are the current pattern.
My tendency is to, is to perpetuate the current pattern and leave that as a minimum size. But recognizing that you may not be able to do that. If you cannot meet health department and setback requirements.
Right, and, and I, that's, Sarah said what I was about to say. And, you know, understanding that means that indeed someone might have been able to come up with. A half acre or one third of an acre site here in Caroline Center, but. You know, that, that's what we're limiting if, if we essentially just say miss and reginald lot size. And I, but I still think that's probably. The best choice.
Do you think that needs a footnote?
Well, Barb wants to speak.
Yeah, I, I'm agreeing with keeping, you know, keeping these kind of historical minimum sizes. For residential lots, but I do think it's really important to include the language. Or as small as allowed by the health department, because I think what this does. Is set up the expectation for somebody who's looking at this chart and saying, oh, I can build a, a house on a half acre in this hamlet. And then they figure out, and then they realize that they can't. And then that creates all sorts of controversy. So I, I think we really need to be explicit that the health department kind of holds sway here.
So I, I, I agree, except that it's not an or in that case, the footnote has to be. Septic department regularly requirements might not allow a lot this small. Because the language of or is, is small loud means if they allow a tenth of an acre, that could happen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I also want to say when we say without public water and sewer, many places only have one of those. So we might want to say and slash or.
I think we're getting rid of.
The, yeah, the red is, is.
In the one above.
This whole line may go.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Okay, cause.
All right, so, so can we, so I think we need maybe voter decide. I mean, because I'm about to delete this row if people want it deleted.
And put that all back and down in the bottom. Sounds good to me.
Are we in agreement?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, good.
Okay, are those the right life lot sizes? Does that make sense? I mean, should we just make it a half acre all the way across? Forget about this three quarter acre stuff.
I think it makes sense if those are the, those are the, the kind of sizes that there are now. Those are the median sizes there are now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the one I might wonder about, I'm a little surprised actually it's three quarters of an acre in, in that center section of Brooktondale. That was a surprising result to me.
I think they're deep.
Yeah, probably because that hillside, right? A lot of them probably go back up that hill and you can't do much of that.
They're just deep.
Okay.
Right. Okay. Great, you're going to go on to average lot size allowed minimum acres. Yes, average of all lots must equal three acres over the entire parcel. And then it probably also needs to have that footnote. Where the footnote has to be somewhere on this page somewhere.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. And the clarification of how rounding is handled in that.
Right.
To be included in the.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily footnote, but in the.
In the article.
Eight point one C.
Yeah, yeah. So Nan, I see you scribbling. That's good because yeah, that, that falls to you.
Yes, we're just going to put Nan's phone number there.
I mean, not round up, but just, we're going to round to the nearest whole into.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the, the normal mathematical meaning of rounding, yes. 1.5 and up goes up and I think below 1.5 goes down or it's 0.5 goes down, sorry.
Okay, on to the next page. Oh, this is so exciting. You know what I realized? The way I, why I was so confused is I had copied the use. The use table and I had it in here twice. That's why I was completely and utterly confused. I mean, trying to make this thing bigger than it actually has to be. Okay. Minimum, minimum commercial lot sizes. We have this at one acre all the way across. I have no problem with that. Anybody have a problem with that? We don't even need a footnote. Okay, minimum front yard setback. This is 50 feet in the hamlet of Beesmer and 20 feet. Everywhere else except in Caroline Center. Where it's 30 and commercial where it's 30. And I'm assuming then these are based on what you guys found when you drove about.
Really?
Um, yes, we, we, well, it was, it was actually from the GIS analysis that. Right, that looked at each lot and created, you know, there were ranges. These are, you know, kind of in the middle. They, they range from shorter to further, but they, they reflect what the difference is. Slight differences between the different areas.
I would, I would suggest that Hamlet Caroline Center be changed to 20. Because I can't see where it should be different. Caroline Center is, most of those are really close to Caroline Center.
Yeah, I mean. There's a lot of properties there, you know, right up on the road in, in a lot of these districts. And I just, I, I, you know. I guess I just in general object to setbacks. As a, as a way of giving form to a community. I just don't think it's, I don't think it helps. There may be reasons to want to put a commercial property, you know, let's say in the commercial zone, 30 feet back. You know, but, you know, in a lot of cases, you know, having buildings, you know, close to the street. Just makes sense, you know, it's just. So, so I'm, I'm just, I'm again.
So in Slaterville, I think a lot of the houses are fairly close to the street because I think they widened the road at some point, right?
Yeah.
That's what happened.
And also if they put inside, Slaterville's got sidewalks, right? They must have taken some yards, yard space to put in sidewalks.
Right. So when you count a setback, where are you count? I don't, I don't actually know where you counted from. Do you count it from roadway?
From the right of way usually, although in smaller, you know, more rural districts, sometimes it's to the center of the road.
I was gonna say. So. From the center of the road to its 50 feet.
A lot of those are very suburban.
Yeah, so actually I was going to ask what, how it was defined for us, man, because it's sometimes unclear. I mean, a lot of the roads actually don't have a right of way strictly because they've been roads by use and all that kind of thing. So it might be centerline, I don't know.
Well, and I just looked, it's, it's one of those definitions that's not there about how it's measured. So, I mean, the, the. The, it's often the center line of the road. Sometimes it's the edge of the road or the edge of the right away, but this, the. The surefire way is probably measured from the center line. And I, I would have to go back to. Rick's notes to see when he did the analysis, if he measured, I think he measured from the center line of the road, but I can check that.
Okay, so assuming that it's from the center line, what I'm hearing is do Hamlet Caroline Center at 20. Rather than at 30, leave commercial at 30. And leave the Hamlet of Beesmer at 50. And that's because that's sort of where they are. There, those houses are quite setback.
Yeah.
Down along Beesmer Road.
I got the impression Ernie might have been arguing for zero on this.
I'm arguing for zero or, or just no setback requirements. Or even something as vague as, you know. I don't know, I, you know, I mean, some, some areas have used average, you know, that, that, you know, you're, you have to represent. You know, your, your property needs to be within the average setback. But I think it just engenders this uniformity that I don't think is necessarily. The character of, of Carol.
Okay, so what are other people?
And then we have accessory buildings and I guess the question would be, you know, how does that work into all of this? Because accessory buildings is the bugaboo. Everybody wants to put the garage in the front setback.
That's so ugly.
Are usually setback so that they're at least equal or behind the front line, wherever the house is.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with requiring accessory structures to be behind the house or behind the, the house line. I think the topography in Caroline is such that, that sometimes you can't do that. And you, you need to put an accessory structure, structure in, in front of a house. And you, you need to put an accessory structure, structure in, in front of a house. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the setback idea, but I'm not comfortable with regulating where accessory structures go in relationship to a residence.
I agree.
All right, I, I think I need to hear someone argue cogently why a setback is important. Ernie sort of argued against him and I argued vigorously against him in the Ag Rural District. I'm agnostic, I guess firmly on them in the Hamlet districts. I know they lend character to the community. They give you consistency of character. I don't know if that's important enough. If it makes people angry, you know. So I, I need to know what the value, I mean, they may have a good value to keep it from buildings looming over a street. So I need somebody to explain that to me.
I mean, I can give you from a planner's perspective is that the set that in a hamlet where you have more uniformity, not, you know, not, you know, it's not like the Ag Rural District where you can have some close, some very far back. But it's the, it's the creation of that streetscape that is, is in more of an aligning of the structure in a more uniform way that, that in my opinion creates part of what defines a hamlet. You know you're in a hamlet. Why do you know you're in a hamlet? Because they tend to be smaller lots and closer to the road. So, so many communities actually have, are being, now are putting a maximum setback for Hamlet areas or village areas to make sure you don't have like these gap tubes. So you have shallow, 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 and then, you know, a house that weighs setback. Now, if all of your hamlets currently are all over the place and you don't have kind of that built to line that's uniform, maybe it's less important. I, I think, I mean, my perspective is that for any dimension, I mean, we want to move the houses closer in the hamlet. We want the houses closer to the road. That's what creates the streetscape. So, um, I think they're important. By having a minimum, does that prevent you, someone from having fifty feet back if they have a long enough lot? No, but you know, another way of looking at it is to, you know, is to put in language that says it doesn't really matter what the setback is as long as they align with neighboring house structures. So that you create that line. As a planner, that's important to me. As you guys, if your community, maybe that's not important to you. This is a policy decision you need to make.
I'd like to measure, measure these from the center line or from the right of way.
She's going to check that.
Yeah, just because that makes it different.
Michelle and then Bill.
And Barb's.
Barb's probably before me. She wants to go first, that's fine.
Okay, I'll, Michelle, Barb, and then Bill.
Okay, I guess I, I would say all these arguments about lining everything up is kind of what I'm kind of leaning, I agree with Ernie about. That just seems so boring to have everything lined up like that. And I'm not, I'm not really sure that's the character of Caroline. I guess the question I have is, do you need a setback? What if people decide to put in sidewalks? I mean, if all the houses are too close to the road, you wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, do you need to leave space in case the community decides to put in sidewalks? Or I know nothing about this stuff, but I'm just, you know, throwing that out there.
Typically, the, 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 the street width, you know, the, the, the the town owns the, the right of way or the state owns the right of way. And that usually includes the shoulder and like ten feet beyond the road. And presumably the sidewalks would occur within that public domain. But not always, and I think that would bear some closer inspection. But, you know, so the, the setback would not preclude someone from putting sidewalk through there in most cases. If you're going down Route seventy nine, it's going to be road, shoulder, sidewalk.
Right.
You know, or maybe tree lawn and sidewalk.
Even if there's, there's the little bit of sidewalk there is, that's exactly how it is. Okay, so.
Barb, then me.
Barb, and then Bill.
Um, yeah, I, I kind of echo what Michelle said. And I'm, I'm now convinced that setbacks are not a good idea, except in commercial. I, I'd like to propose that we keep the thirty minimum front yard setback for commercial, but do away with the others.
And I, I guess where I'm at on this is, you know, basically my threshold in general for, for zoning things is there's got to be some sort of public benefit need, whatever, that is big enough that it warrants making a regulation that everyone's got to pay attention to. So the one thing I've heard here is a sidewalk that makes me think that about a setback. I think obviously Route seventy nine, there's a right of way, but I think a lot of town roads don't. So yes, I think this question needs some, some examination because I think it would be good to encourage sidewalks. And indeed, the comprehensive plan does indeed encourage sidewalks in the hamlets. And so it is a public good and benefit to have an area in which that can happen. And if the town does not have a right of way, then we probably need to require a setback that would allow that. Absent that, I'm going with no setback. I'm okay with doing one in the commercial area. So.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we assume at this point that the places that we would, I think at this, I'd be thinking about sidewalks would be in the Brooktondale area. And if everything else is on seventy nine, I can't imagine them in Speedsville or in, but maybe those, though the houses there are extraordinarily close to the road, many of them already. Like those.
As far as building lots from Brooktondale where there would be sidewalks, they're non-existent.
There are, there is, there are sidewalks, but not very short. It's very short. It's from the old post office, like down to the, down to the new post office. That's about it.
Used to be always here.
Yeah, so let's assume that that is counted from the center line was there and that it's in the public right of way at this point, and we will find that out for sure. And if that were the case, let's take Barb's and Ernie's suggestion that we do away with these setbacks and allow commercial in the thirty and that we could still have sidewalks. If that were the case, are people happy with that?
Yeah, and that would be thirty feet from the road right of way.
Right. Okay, so that, that sounds fine. And we will, I'll, we'll find out from Nan and from Rick what we're counting. And who the heck owns like the road through Brooktondale? Is that a county road? And then Bill.
Yeah, no, I mean, so yeah, I, it, it was a county road or a town road, it won't necessarily tell us whether or not there's the right of way exists. I, I, Don knows some of this.
If you look at the property map, if we, you know.
Yeah, Rick may be able to determine this.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you can just look at the property map and see where lines are drawn.
Okay, so we'll ask Nan and Rick to bring that back to us. But assuming that this is the case, we'll go with this and if it's different, we'll come back and revisit it. Is that good, Bill?
I'm good with that.
Okay, did you have anything else that we're going to say?
Uh, none of that one.
Okay, okay, let us move forward into maximum lot cover, coverage percent.
No, you, you missed building height.
Oh, I missed building height, which is a lot like thirty-five everywhere is what it says.
Right, and that was an increase from the original thirty, based on, I think, a comment from Ernie, if I'm remembering right, about the need for frequent variances just for an antenna or whatever. I believe that the reason there is a height often traces back to some, basically fire departments and their ability to reach upper floors and things. There was a comment that I'm scrambling to find where someone said they were upset at thirty, even the thirty-five foot max height, what's the purpose? You know, shouldn't you just have something that says you can't block someone's view? But again, I think this is a public health, in the, you know, the basis of this is on public health.
Right.
Not view. And so I'm good with thirty-five personally, but.
The, the, the building code regulates building height very carefully by not only the use, but also by the materials that it's built up. That is, you can build, you know, concrete buildings much higher than you can these other things. So, so I think that, that in fact, the building height regulations and zoning are more ones of trying to create uniformity of streetscape and, and neighborhood and, and that sort of thing. And I guess my only comment is that, or my previous comment was that, you know, this thirty-five foot height is just, it's, it's really hard, you know, people with walkout basements and steep pitched roofs and nine foot ceilings and their gigantic McMansions never fit under thirty-five feet. You can get them under forty, but you know, it's just, it's, it's tough. So that's, that's, that's just, you know, why I think forty feet would be a, a better number. And, or, or nothing at all. I'm always in favor of no, no regulation.
Michelle.
I, I like the thing of during the fire department. And I heard from somebody else that, you know, like a two-story house is considered reasonable for most fire, like rural fire departments to handle. And so that would be like thirty-five, wouldn't it, or?
But Ernie's saying forty.
No, I mean, you know, I mean, once you go above, in, in wood frame construction, once you go above two stories over a basement, you're required to put in a sprinkler system. And then you can go to three stories. And, you know, a story can be eight feet, it can be nine feet, it can be twenty feet. It doesn't, doesn't matter. In terms of absolute building height, I don't have those figures in front of me, but there are absolute building heights regulated by the building code for the various types of construction. So that, you know, fireproof buildings can be much taller than non-fireproof buildings. Sprinklered buildings can be much taller than non-sprinkler buildings. So, so I think the safety stuff is, is kind of already inherent in the building code. And so we don't need to be concerning ourselves with that. And that we should be looking at this as, are there other reasons for limiting the height of buildings? And so often for not obstructing views, for, you know, kind of making things look like the rest of it. But, you know, most agricultural buildings, you know, bars regularly fifty, sixty feet tall, you know, there's, there's, you know. It's not, not uncommon to see big buildings like that. Residential buildings, you know, thirty-five feet, very common. Forty feet, not that common unless you go out to, you know, East Lake subdivision where, you know, everybody's brown McMansions. But, you know, so, so I, I think it's just kind of a question of, does Caroline need a height limit? And if it does, then we can talk about that.
Okay, Michelle.
Well, I guess I'm kind of leaning towards Ernie's thinking on this. I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, not a lot, there's some buildings with strange architecture, strange and unusual architecture that might have a big tower or something. I mean, I think there's one in my own neighborhood. That's probably taller than thirty-five feet. I don't know. So, yeah, if it's not a safety issue, I don't, I don't see the need to put a limit.
And, and to clarify, of course, farm buildings are, particularly if they're an ag district, are exempted anyway. But, but they do add to the character of the neighborhood and they are maybe sixty, sixty feet tall. So, yeah, and I will also go with, again, absence a important public safety or public benefit reason, I don't see a re, need reason to keep something in the zoning. So if Ernie is really certain that the existing building codes and fire codes handle this issue, I'm okay with deleting the height.
Okay, everyone else?
I will follow up.
Okay, so let's, let us say that Ernie will come back to us if that's a problem. And if that's, if it's, if it's not a problem, shall we change these to forty then, except for?
No, I think we're getting rid of it.
Oh, we're getting rid of it? Okay, oh, that's right, because this is the maximum building height. Okay, fine, okay. I, I still, I think, Ernie can check that. I think we also need to talk to the, to the fire people here.
Yep.
Okay, I will talk to the fire people.
Yeah.
So let's, let's get rid of that unless we hear back later. So at this point, I don't know, make it in the color or something, so if we have.
Yeah, I'm gonna highlight that.
Okay, good. I'm going to do one more line here, though I think we only have two more lines. Let's finish the two lines for God's sake. Okay.
I warn you, this last line could take a while.
Okay, well, let's do one line and see what the hell happens. Maximum lot coverage. Okay, so we've got we got twenty in the ag, we're twenty percentage in the Ag Rural District Beesimer. We've got twenty-five percent in Caroline Center and Speedsville and outer Brooktondale, I love outer Brooktondale. And fifty percent in West Slaterville and Brooktondale Center and sixty percent in commercial. And by lot coverage, I'm assuming we mean buildings, we don't mean like tarmac as well in commercial.
No, it's, it's, it's everything. It's defined as the percentage of a lot covered by the combined area of all building structures, parking areas, or other impervious surfaces on the lot.
Okay, so if you put in permeable asphalt, which there is now, there is permeable asphalt, that wouldn't count. It's very expensive, but it does exist.
Yeah, we did it on monastery school.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's cost a fortune. Okay, so.
But I think many engineers would consider even crusher gravel run parking lot as because it's crushed down would be mostly impervious. I think you need to clarify what you mean by, you know, if there is permeable pavers or permeable surface. If that's considered part of the lot coverage.
In my experience, with my experience with lot coverage, they don't include driveways and stuff. I mean, I'm more used to your, it's buildings. It's the square footage of the building of the shed and this and that. And that becomes the, the, the number that they're looking at. That, you know, parking lot, the driveway turnaround, all that doesn't count. Sidewalks don't count.
Depends on the code. It's different.
So, I, I mean, it's just that it's, they're very different things. And, you know, and so in a, in a commercial setting where there's going to likely be a lot of paved area in relationship to the, the building size, I mean, that ratio is going to be much higher than, you know, your usual house probably. But so I, I, I guess the numbers that you've come here with are numbers that reflect what's actually in those zones?
No, no, those, those reflect, you know, I don't want to say standard, but those reflect the notion that in, in certain areas, like in a commercial area, you want to help, you want to have them maximize the lot, the use of the lot. So generally, commercial areas and denser, you know, villages and hamlets, they are allowed to use more of the lot and have less green space. Whereas in lower density areas and rural areas, they're generally a much lower lot percentage. In watershed areas, if you look at watershed rules and regulations in, in, they're typically fifteen percent in, when there's sensitive areas. So there, those numbers I, I use based on more of, you know, the kind of density. And in the commercial area, you know, certainly to maximize those the use of those lands.
Yeah, well, I mean, to take for an example, if, if you had the so-called minimum lot size of a half acre and then you were only allowed twenty-five percent of your lot to cover it. So now you're down to an eighth of an acre and an eighth of an acre is, I don't know how many square feet. What's forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty divided by eight? It's.
Around five thousand.
About five thousand. So you get your two thousand square foot house and your driveway and, you know, your other stuff. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, okay, maybe it's not unreasonable, but I think has to be looked at in order to make a decision here.
I guess I would say that in, in my opinion, I mean, lot coverage is, you don't have to have it or you can change it. I think it's a common. in on either end of the perspective or the scale. So in the commercial areas, I think adding in parking lots is important because you can have a very small building with a very large parking lot that covers up the whole lot and you don't want that. On the other hand, the, in the ag rural district, you can have a commercial building, but you're trying to preserve open space and openness. And if you allow high percentages of lot coverage, then you lose, that's, that's one of the ways to control or to, I guess, control the amount of space that is actually used on the lot. So for residential uses, you know, I, it's probably a lot less important. In major developments or commercial areas, I, I would recommend you keep in parking lots as part of the lot coverage because it does cover the lot. And maybe that's where it's important in the ag rural district and in the, for commercial uses in those hamlet areas. So that's another way of looking at it. I, I, I think that my opinion and recommendation is, is to leave the parking lot as part of what's covered in lot coverage.
Okay, I, I, I agree with that. I just, I just need to wrap my head around what a, you know, a three-acre lot with, I can't read the number, you know, you know, in a three thousand square foot building with a fifty-car parking lot is going to look like in terms of, you know, percentage of lot coverage, just, you know, and it's just.
So I, I think that one possibility here, I agree with keeping, because you, you used the word green space now, which I think is a, a good phrase. But I think I agree with leaving parking lots in. Maybe if we exempt driveways, that would help because houses don't have parking lots. They might have a parking area, but you wouldn't call it a parking lot. And that way, if it's basically buildings and parking lots and other impervious surfaces, that would be a way to at least get at the right things we want. And that relaxes the problem for resident, residences lot because their driveway, which is probably almost equal to their house area, doesn't count.
I don't think we have to mess with the definition so much. I think impervious surface is impervious surface. I think we can leave that. But I just want to know that the percentages make sense, you know, that's.
No, I, I agree.
I just, I just don't have a grasp of it.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest that what we do is we actually leave these two till next week and that we go on. Oh, I'm sorry. I never see your hand, Barbara, because I think it's way far in the front. Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I would just like to suggest, and again, we can take this up next week, but we revise the, the title there to maximum lot coverage for non-residential structures. So, so this one not incl, this would not apply to, to residential dwellings. You know, single and two-family homes. It would apply to businesses and commercial uses within the districts.
The rationale being that you think.
The ra, the rationale being that, that we, what we've been trying to do is to allow a lot of freedom for people in how they live and how they choose to, to, to live, you know, and, and do their, how they use their residence. And so, you know, if you, if you look at how accessory structures, how residents, residential buildings are put up in Brooktondale, I mean, some of the, some of the times there's a lot of stuff on a property and sometimes there's not. And again, I don't see a particular health or safety or even aesthetic reason to do that. Whereas with businesses, I think, again, because commercial structures can have larger footprints than residences often do, that we want to allow some, you know, view, view sheds, if you want to use that on a small scale, no matter where those commercial structures are, no matter what district those commercial structures are in.
Makes sense.
Okay, well, let us, oh, you know what? That is, that's my phone telling me to go and take a, an allergy tablet. That's what that is.
See you later.
It's in my coat. I will, I will get my coat and turn the alarm off. Is it a charging, it's a charging machine?
No, it's just, you know, I would, I would point out, you know, the, the kinds of, of, of numbers that, you know, come to mind when I start thinking about these things is Hugo Heights, I think it's thirty-five percent. Fall Creek, I think it's thirty percent. You know, and so, you know, it's just, so, so that's, but I don't, you know, so that I don't have a sense of, you know, if you have a, a, if a Dollar General wanted to plot down one of their things, what could they get away with? You know, it's just, uh, just need to think about what that looks like.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we go off and think about this. We think about Barbara's suggestion. And we also look at the maximum building footprint. And I'm gonna, Bill sent us a note today that he was going to suggest increasing the maximum building footprint from five thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet in the commercial area. So with that, that is our, that's what we would have to do when we meet again in two weeks and two days.
And I just want to note, I, I did, I was also, had three size changes possible. You know, I think good food for thought for us to think about and talk about, which is in the ag rural district, the rationale being, maybe that's a good place for some large uses. We restrict more the types of uses as we've done on the use table. But maybe that fifteen hundred square feet is not the appropriate feel for our ag districts. I want people to think about that. And similarly, I wasn't sure if we should go up or down in the outer part of Brooktondale. Is that more residential? Is it less residential? And yes, I think the commercial district, looking at some of the existing uses, there's a fairly good argument that we should make that substantially larger. That's what I'm tossing out there. Please look also at, at the earlier document I sent about with some comments from residents. Because there's definitely a handful of comments about the commercial size.
Okay, good. That wasn't me. So.
That's our final credit circle.
So before, I want to look again at where we have to go from here. So let us assume that next, when we meet next, we whip those together. We then go on to corner lots, net acreage and calculating density and on to density bonuses and procedures and seeker and all that. I think it is entirely possible that in the next meeting, we can wrap up Article Three. And we may also be able, when Nan sends us the definitions next week, that we look at the definitions, we mark things that we have questions about, and we talk about them at the next meeting. If that is there for the case, we would then, at the end of the next meeting, be able to say we have Article One, Article Two, Article Three, and the definitions done, and we could put those up as Draft Two on the website and we could schedule a meeting or meetings. So during this, two weeks and two days, that before we meet again, I think that's right. Isn't that right? Fourteen, great. We, I will be in touch about the kind of public meetings that we think we can have and how we could do those. And so that we can have that done by the time we come in at the next meeting. And that would, I think, mean that we could schedule a public informational meetings somewhere after the twenty, probably around the twenty-eighth or on into early May. In there. That, that's the sense. Does that make sense to people?
It's a working hypothesis.
It is a working hypothesis, yeah.
Well, I, I, I only want to point out that the density bonus section therefore brings up the question of conservation subdivisions because it relates to conservation subdivisions as I understand things.
Yes. So we want everyone to read this and then come, and let's, we can discuss online in the next two weeks what we're thinking about so that we can get a little forwarder.
Right, so I'm just saying, I, I, from comments I've heard from, from a few people, it sounds like conservation subdivisions might be a substantial discussion. So I'd like to think we will finish the next meeting, but, but just want to be aware that there's a chance we might not.
You're crushing my spirit.
I am so sorry.
My spirit is very crushable today. I'm very, I'm a fragile flower. So, um, with that, I thank you all for the work you've been doing. I do have a few more questions that have come in that I'll be sending on. And I do want to report that I read something very disturbing, which is that some anti-zoning signs have disappeared in Speedsville. And I don't, I have not heard about that anywhere else. I do find it disturbing. It shouldn't happen. We shouldn't have, we shouldn't have signs disappearing. We should not, of any.
Michelle's, Michelle did it. She's.
I'm raising my hand. No, I'm going to say, my neighbors, my neighbor's Carolina's kind sign also disappeared.
Interesting. So maybe somebody is out collecting signs.
Maybe this.
Yeah, we do not want, I, you know, I'm in general for free speech unless it's really annoying. So.
Ask one more thing.
You may.
I, I would like to just not ignore Pete Hoyt's request that we talk about adding people to the commission.
Sure, what do you think?
Uh, I mean, I think it's, it's late coming to the table at this point, but, you know, if somebody really wanted to do it, I can't see that I can object. I mean, unless they're going to just be disruptive.
My only objection is I don't want to go backwards.
No, we don't want to go backwards. And I think that would have to be the, the understanding is that this person is going to have to get up to speed in her.
That would be my enormous objection and I'm happy to talk, the town board has asked me what I thought at this point. And I said, I think it could slow things down and I am against slowing things down because this is now about a year. It's not like we're whipping along, guys. So that's my objection. And I also think that classifying people on their, what they do for work is.
I don't think we can do that, but I think we can certainly open up.
I'd like to hear what everybody else has to think, but you don't have to tell me now. You can send the email and I will be happy to pass it along to the board.
Well, I asked more than once from when we lost the first person that maybe we should have thought about. So I've asked two or three times, so.
Well, we have added people because when we started, we, we didn't have all the planning board members on, and then the planning board members came on. Michelle?
I don't see the purpose in adding more people. I don't see what, I guess my question would be to Ernie and Bruce, what would the benefit be to adding more people?
It, it would just be to, to placate the people who think that this is an exclusive club.
Well, I don't care about that. No, sorry. No, I just think.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, we, we shouldn't be beholden to, you know, the, the loudest noise in the room, but, but I don't think there's any, any specific reason why we shouldn't entertain it, you know, unless it's going to be disruptive to our process.
So, so that would be my objection. If somebody's been following along and they've kept up to speed and they feel like they can add something to the discussion, I, yeah, I think that's worth considering. If somebody wants to join just so they can debate whether or not we should be doing this at all, that's just a waste of time and I think we should discourage that.
I, I've said to the board, the other thing that the board has asked me is, you know, what do we think? And I said, I think it's your decision. That's what I've generally said to them because we don't appoint people to the board. I think it's your decision. So, but I'm, we'll send this message out again. I'd be very happy to hear what everybody else has to say. I see Bill's hand up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to read a couple of things. So, you know, first off, though we clear and talking that way, there's been some viewpoint that, oh, there are vacancies in the planning, on the zoning commission. So I wanted to make it clear, you know, there's no set number or membership of the zoning commissions. There aren't any vacancies. That doesn't mean that someone shouldn't be added if there aren't enough bodies to carry the load. So I'm open to considering having, you know, you know, asking the town board to appoint another member or two just to make sure we have a diverse perspective that is constructive and be enough people to, to make sure that this project gets done in a, in a timely fashion. It will be up the town board to select a person who is qualified and will be a constructive member and not a destructive member. But absolutely, it can't be someone comes out and says, oh, let's go back to that use table now. Right? I mean, the next time we come around to edit that, that's fine, but what's done is done. We're moving forward from here. And that would be my, my minimum, you know, requirement that they be amenable to that sort of deal for joining in midstream. I'm not set on having someone join, but I'm also not set against it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, let us move to adjourn. I will see you in two weeks and two days and I will see you on email. Lots and lots of email.